So we'll open up the night with a special meeting. Okay, I'll call it a work. We have two items on there. You guys can see on the agenda. It's just all of this is the yard sale and the poultry festival proclamation that we do over here. So I'll probably do a yay and a, you know, all in favor instead of call by district unless there's, unless someone is opposed to that. Problem with that? Any questions before we get started?
What did you say about the yard sale?
It said it's what we normally do for the poultry festival.
Oh, yard sale. So this is new.
It's saying, yeah.
Yeah, no yard sale.
Yeah, no yard sale.
Within the area of the map that was provided.
Poultry festival map. Yeah. Just keep that mess. Is that gonna get crazy? All right.
That, Jessica, that day of the entire weekend.
It'd be for the.
I believe it's for Friday or Saturday.
Friday and Saturday.
Friday and Saturday, yeah.
Thank you.
It used to be the entire town back in 2015. It, it went down to a zoned area in and around the poultry festival.
I'm gonna do that. I'm gonna go there. Okay, thank you.
Teddy, are you ready?
Yes. It's lost.
Okay. All right, I'm gonna call them to an order seating. This is a special council meeting for April 17th here at 6:02 PM. I have a form of council. If I could, Mr. Brown, if you would give us an indication, please. That's correct.
Father, I thank you as always for your service to us, sacrifice you made for us. I pray a little bit. We recall that and welcome your spirit into lead us tonight as we work through the business of town in a way that's satisfying. Do you do this best? I really wish you just.
Amen. Stay for the pledge if you're able, led by Ms. Brown.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, thank you. I will let the agenda and I will motion to approve. Mr. Brown, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Brown, any discussion? All in favor, say aye. And your opposed, say nay. Ayes have it. For new business, we have a proclamation for the Poultry Festival Day 2024. Again, this proclamation, it's the Poultry Festival sponsored by the Leesville merchants. And whereas the 2024 South Carolina Poultry Festival will be celebrating 38 years of existence in the town of Batesburg-Leesville, with the dedication of volunteers of the Poultry Festival Committee, the South Carolina Poultry Festival has been and continues to be one of the most popular and successful festivals in the state. The South Carolina Poultry Festival provides a day for the entire family to enjoy the many activities and events scheduled. And the South Carolina Poultry Festival honors the poultry industry, which is vital to the economy, health, and well-being of our community, state, and nation. Do I have a motion to accept this proclamation? Mr. Brown, do I have a second?
Second.
Ms. Hartley, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? None opposed, motion passes. And the second item of new business is a resolution for the Poultry Festival yard sales. And this is, it's the Leesville Merchants Association sponsoring the annual South Carolina Poultry Festival Day on May the 10th, Friday, Saturday, May 11th. The town of Batesburg-Leesville has determined in the best interest of the vendors participating at the South Carolina Poultry Festival to prohibit yard sales in certain areas within the Batesburg-Leesville Town Limits. No yard sales shall be permitted within the area of the Poultry Festival as shown on an attached map. Do I have a, a motion to accept this resolution? A motion by Ms. Hartley? Or who was it?
Paul.
Oh, you got the motion. Okay, sorry. Second? Second by Mr. Brown, any discussion?
I have a question.
Mr. Hall?
All of these vendors get business licenses?
Um, no.
No, they do not.
There is no revenue to the town from?
The Poultry Festival pays a, a business license for the umbrella of the Poultry Festival.
And this resolution really is about yard sales. So any other discussion on the resolution? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And opposed, nay? Anyone? Anyone? If the motion passes. And a motion to adjourn the special meeting. Ms. Brown, do I have a second?
Second.
Mr. Wise, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And any opposed? All right, we are adjourned the special meeting. Okay, if anyone wants to grab some food, grab it now. We still have someone a few minutes out.
I don't think it gets started.
You are getting started? All right. Anyone?
I'll go quick. Might as well buy you a couple of napkins. Broke a seat.
Not gonna give a cold water, good water. Good right.
I got plenty of time.
I got some sleep now. I'll take those two. What imagine? Either Caesar, Caesar.
You seen?
I've got. Something, something. It is sweet. You don't need, you don't need sweet.
Every now and then it's okay.
Thank you. For the heads up. By the way, no contact. Oh, okay.
He does.
Oh, yeah, twins, baby. She lays on Wednesday.
Did it produce any house?
Two winters. No winters.
Okay.
We did, well, we did, uh. Twenty-eight, I think it was twenty-eight courts or anything.
Somebody needs to put stop to the lady.
You know how to do that?
That is perjury.
Do you have any glass jaws or do it?
Isn't it? If she, huh?
No, I don't.
Put the big. Which is a felony?
Done that one time and the thing started.
And state direction would.
I'm scared to throw them things away because I need a little flow.
Yeah, you gotta watch your judgment.
My judgment.
Ted, did you get a hard stop on that camera? Did you get a hard stop on that camera?
Did it stop?
Did it stop?
I'm afraid to stop. We can edit, cut all this out. We'll edit, cut all this out. That thing says technical man, if they still report home. I'm going to go.
The vegetables good.
I'm gonna turn paralegal, so I might want to pick this up. Okay.
Steve, do you want some leave before we start? Before we start?
We're gonna cut it. We're starting.
We have a story, yeah.
Jason, do you want some of that water?
Oh, no.
What else?
You gotta do what you gotta do.
Jason, what kind of salad?
That's what you want, you know that?
Okay.
That one's over there.
Go ahead. Park said it's good.
Yeah, vegetables good.
Somebody want the weed? Okay, I'm gonna have to wait because I'm gonna try to be a meaningful.
Are you sure?
Yes.
All right. Hold on one second. So let's call an order, our council work session. It is April 17th, 2024. We count hall complex. We have two items on for the agenda for our work session. For new business presentation, discussion of safe streets for all action plan led by Ethan Hunt and discussion of annual action plan items for fiscal year 2024, 2025, annual budget. Ted, you wanna introduce your guests real quick?
Sure. So I'm Jessica John. I am the project manager at Ethan Hunt for the Safe Streets for All program. So here comes Jamie, he's making his way in.
Oh, he coming in right now.
He is with Wood Valley.
It's all as long as it could, Jamie.
Thank you, I apologize.
Good job waiting for me.
Okay, good.
Now we.
We didn't call him.
Literally, you came in exactly the time we started.
Great, do you want me to go?
Well, yeah. I like you.
All right. No, you're good. You kind of know it's like a.
Seven AM flight, drinking to a 10 AM flight, drinking to the plate. And here we are. Well, good evening.
Good evening.
All right, thanks again, sorry I'm, I'm late. Let me also introduce Amy Johnson Bailey from, new to my team.
Yes.
Used to be the director of the Palm Meadow Cycling Coalition. And she's our, one of our bicycle pedestrian experts locally. So when we started this project, when we started this project.
Does it own website?
When we started this project, somebody said, well, I've been there, there's no crashes there of sorts. And so we looked at the data and I'm not gonna completely disagree that if you're looking within the town boundaries of Batesburg-Leesville, yeah, there are relatively few crashes that involve or result in serious injury or fatality. So the green dots of the past five years, and in fact, there's only been one fatality within town limits in the past five years. And that was the, kind of an oddball, if I recall correctly, somebody being chased and ran off the road. But then we took a step back and looked a little bit bigger. And if you draw a three mile circle around town boundaries, there have been 18 fatalities, I'm sorry, 15 fatalities on the roads approaching Batesburg-Leesville. Now, not your responsibility, but as somebody said to me, in a nearby community, they're not our roads, but they are our people. Right? And so we took a step back, but we'll talk about issues specifically within town limits. But we also want to spend a few minutes talking about the ones approaching town because I think that's where there's some opportunities to improve outcomes. And then there's some opportunities within town to really leverage some of the things that you are trying to do in terms of community revitalization. And that's really kind of eyes on the prize in many ways, is to try and find a hook into some of the federal infrastructure dollars with an opportunity coming up. So we'll kind of cover both topics as we go. So green dots, serious injuries, red dots, fatalities, 15 in the last five years, which actually as rates go is fairly high compared to other areas of the state. So what do those look like? Start at the bottom right, we can't prevent every crash. I was saying, you can't legislate against stupid. Somebody's gonna drive 75 miles an hour, you know, on a windy road at night, when it's a little bit rainy, there's only so much you can do. Right, you can mitigate, you can try and prevent run off the road, but at the end of the day, you know, if somebody's gonna do something stupid, the best you can hope for is trying to get a better outcome than death. So we can reduce the risk, right? We can reduce the risk, that's what we can, we can do. The two big causes and contributing factors, roadway departure, kind of as I indicated, 80% of all of the fatalities and serious injuries in that three mile buffer were roadway departures, run off the roads, many of them late at night, early morning hours, sometimes rainy, sometimes not. But that's, that's the challenge from a, from a really bad outcome perspective. Intersections, these are good predictors of where pedestrian near miss injury or fatality can occur. And you have a lot of intersections, and I shouldn't say a lot, but there may be five or six intersections in town where there's a high risk of injury or fatality. And so this is where I think we're gonna start to look for opportunities to leverage to get sidewalk projects and some intersection tightening up projects that hopefully are right on the edges of the community redevelopment areas to try and, you know, get some, get that pipeline, pipeline movement. That's, that's our goal. And then human behavior, right? At the end of the day, I won't be the first to admit, as I was speeding over here from the airport, I looked down once or twice, right? It just, the irony of a lot of this safe streets for all stuff is that, is that we know exactly how to, to almost eliminate serious injuries, fatalities, but it's a big policy shift at a national level, like put the speed regulators on cars, don't let cars start without seat belts, all of those kinds of things. Now, that's a big step, right? So we mitigate on the, on the backend. That's what Jessica was advocating for the other day, and I told her that's a big step.
I did, I did. I don't remember that either.
I'm gonna record to you somebody.
Yeah, I wouldn't say I'm a fast talking Yankee and she's the slower talking Southern, but just bear with it. So there's some things at intersections that we can do as well. I think the other thing about all this that's tough, and it kind of goes back to the first point, is that, you know, these are all SC DOT roads by and large. And, you know, they've got priorities to deal with across the state. And actually, there's a fair number of projects that are in the vicinity that address some of these issues, but at the end of the day, if we can bring them money, it should be hard for them to turn down. Should be. So, you know, we, we take this, part of what, actually don't say, part of what I'm gonna show you is responding to the federal kind of grant program requirements. So are we ever gonna get to zero injuries and fatalities? No, it's an aspirational thing, right? It is, that's, that's the goal. You know, we, we see some go down, some go up, but the, you know, aspirationally, that's what we're trying to get to. So in order to apply for the, the big money, you have to say, you know, as a council, we commit to the goal of zero injury fatalities. Now, I had one town manager in Florida say, well, I don't wanna do that, liability, you know, you know, what if we don't get there, are they gonna take money away? No. It's like, it's aspirational, it's making the statement that this is something we wanna, we wanna aim for. And then we do that through this safe systems approach, safer users, safer vehicles, speeds, safer roads, and post-crash care. And I wanna talk about post-crash care, which often gets missed in all of this. There's not a lot you all can do about safer vehicles, right? That's the stuff that Jessica was advocating with seat belts and speed regulation, right? There are some things you can do about safer users, and it's the commitment we all make individually. But really where your plan kind of lands is in these two here, kind of safer speeds, safer roads, management and mitigation, and post-crash care. And I think, you know, one of the articles I was reading, excuse me, it's the nature of a rural area in some respects, is that, you know, somebody has a serious crash at 2 AM in the morning, by the time the volunteer fire rescue service mobilizes, gets there, you know, does the, you know, extraction from the vehicle, that's what it is, moves them to, you know, into the ambulance, stabilizes them, moves them towards the hospital trauma center. It's a long time, right? Like half an hour from here at a minimum to the nearest kind of trauma oriented hospital, if I'm not right, right? So that golden hour, you know, kind of goes very quickly. Now, there are things that can be put on, you know, emergency apparatus, this is one thing they just did in rural Southern Maryland, where they started to stock a certain blood, I'm gonna get this wrong, it's not my world, it's a certain type of blood transfusion product that tends to stop bleeding more quickly.
Plasma?
Well, it's something like plasma. Don't ask me, it's beyond my intellectual capacity, but somewhere in that direction. That they're now starting to roll this out more aggressively, but it's not cheap for small rural, you know, volunteer fire companies, but.
Synthetic blood, what's he talking about?
Could well be. It seems like he knows, I'm gonna take his word for it, sorry.
No, 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 I'm just trying to put my hand around somebody.
Yes.
Follow us to hospital then.
Okay. So that's a post-crash care thing. It's also, you know, something that's hard for a rural system to do, but it's also something that's highly effective in terms of stopping some of the bleed out things in that, in that golden hour. So there are post-crash care things that can be done at local level too, to think about. And if there are things in your volunteer fire service, local fire service, rescue service, that ought to be included in some grant opportunities, we should talk about them because they often get missed, right? They often get missed. If there are things that would be of value to your local fire rescue, right? Where was I? Rural East, which are Maryland. Two out of every three of the volunteer fire rescue companies do not have the jaws of life, right? Which, now, if you have to wait 45 minutes or an hour to get the extraction equipment to someplace, your golden hour is done, right? So if there are things like that, that we should be incorporating in this to, you know, roll into a grant, those are eligible. Just often, we kind of miss that, that piece of this. Okay, so that's the goal that you're asked to commit to, aspirational, those are the kind of general tools. So these are, after the community meeting and the technical analysis and talking with staff, these are the kind of six things that, that we are recommending to put into the plan. Some of these you may not be wild about, but are gonna ring the bells at USDOT when it comes time to, to look at money. And some of them are, yeah, easy peasy, low cost kinds of things that are more SC DOT that we could get, you know, money for. But again, I just kind of go back to what that one community person said, which is they're not our roads, but they are our people. And so that's kind of the lens at which we, we look at this. So let's walk through the six strategies that we talked a little bit about wrongful road in nighttime, talked about intersections, pet safety, speeding, safer routes to school, and then policy and planning to take this. So run off the road in nighttime crashes. Driving in here this afternoon, if it weren't sunny, I probably would've run off the road a couple of times. Not terribly familiar, go a little fast, you come up on a hill, you don't really expect to be there, windy definitely, right? Deep drainage ditches, right? It doesn't take much. So very simple, low cost things like, you know, rumble strips, they've, I know SC DOT has done a lot of the, the side rumble strips, not as many in the satellites. Guardrails are few and far between. Can you, do you go out and you put them on every dot where there was a, a crash? No, you look at it from a predictive standpoint about certain curve types, certain speeds, things like that. The signs, 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 well, signs don't, you know, the big issue with signs these days is what they call retroreflactive. Feds changed their standards about 10, 12 years ago, and there's supposed to be a highly reflective material, you can see it in that time. While most states just haven't gotten there to replacing these signs. This grant can be used to do these highly retroreflective signs, so when you're coming up on a curve, it's not some faded yellow, you know, thing, it's like bright thing, bounce of black, a lot of peddlers. Would've been very helpful if this were in the dark. Somebody else who's not familiar with that, and a lot of people going through town, right? That not every curve in the hills is familiar to them.
Be careful on that. And watch the deer.
Half of all of the fatalities, there's a whole other science about, about the ecology of roads that's just fascinating, and about how you funnel deer and other wildlife into certain places. Yeah, I've got a book in my bag, I don't know. About half of all the fatalities occur at night, but only about quarter of all the travel occurs in the dark hours. So again, the highly retroreflective signs, the guardrails, the rumble strips, even the occasional, I know Ted, you're wild about this, the occasional street light, right? At a curve, you know, is remarkably helpful. Ted told me I wasn't allowed to talk about streetlights. But there's ways to do them that are solar these days, that actually don't really end up costing anything. Easy for me to say. Okay, intersections, so that was the run off the road, intersections. So this is where we actually get to some of the opportunities we see to leverage the, and going after the federal funds. So if you look at the two major redevelopment areas, if we can tee them off, right, get them squared up on the outsides, and then you all spend the money that you're finding to do the more interior portions, we think that could be a real opportunity. The ones that you, it's the river's fault. No, no, no.
Well, so as you were saying, 65% of crashes in town occur at the intersections. So looking at the intersection geometry, now, as we were saying, these are very conceptual, and this is to go for a cost estimate to put in the grant. Once you get the implementation grant, we would start the process of meeting with y'all, doing a feedback for the intersection, finding out, you know, what you wanna see at the intersection, don't wanna see at the intersection. So don't let, you know, a roundabout or anything, or realigning scare you at this point, it's just for a cost estimate and conceptual only. And we would meet with y'all and discuss what type of design you would actually want to see when you get the implementation grant. But these are two options to kind of handle the offset intersections that y'all have throughout town. There's a lot of areas where you have these offset intersections, intersections that don't quite align directly across from each other. So you have Columbia Avenue and Lee Street, Mitchell Street, Heim Street, you've got your church in Saluda, you have the Brody and Shealy intersection of Lee. There, there are multiple areas throughout town where we can really implement, do we do a realignment, do we do a roundabout, how can we make these intersections better aligned? So those would be a top priority that would greatly improve safely, in safety through the town. Also, the skewed intersections, you have Willis and Heim, that's a really tight angle, it's hard to, to turn around fully and see what's coming, and so improving sight distance can really be a big thing when you line it up at a T in a right angle. So improving pedestrian safety, looking at sidewalks, again, just like with the roadway, once, these are for cost estimate purposes, once you get the implementation grant, we would talk, talk more definitive projects with y'all, and y'all would be in the driver's seat of that. What we kind of looked at for our cost estimate purposes is really getting those main arterials through the town. So you'll see these dark green areas connect existing sidewalks, so you're really just filling in the gap on church and Columbia so that you have solid sidewalk all the way through town on both of the main arterials. We also have a couple of connector roads, you know, in North Carolina, James Avenue, Lee, just kind of connecting the two arterials. And then, once you get the backbone of the town, then you can start connecting in the neighborhoods in each of the quadrants. So that's what we would propose in the grant. Again, once we get the money, we would talk to you about actual locations that you wanted to see and don't wanna see. So reducing speeding.
All right. What do you want me to do?
I can take it. So as you were saying, one of the big things was the crashes coming into town. So when we did our speed study, for the most part, within town, there's not a huge speeding issue in comparison to coming into town. So these pink roads here are actually corridors that are part of the school zone as well. So heavy speeding area in a school zone, and then the blue roads represent just high speed roads in general. So this is not a situation where we would be looking for y'all to fund an extra police force or anything like that. This is something that we would incorporate traffic calming into, you know, you're looking at your rumble strips, things like that, to kind of reduce speed, as well as working with DOT to actually reduce the speed. But that would be in conjunction with. we would talk to you about actual locations that you wanted to see and didn't wanna see. So, reducing speeding.
All right. What do you want me to do?
I can take it. So, as Jamie was saying, one of the big things was the crashes coming into town. So, whenever we did our speed study, for the most part, within town, there's not a huge speeding issue in comparison to coming into town. So, these pink roads here are actually corridors that are part of the school zone as well. So, heavy speeding area in a school zone. And then, the blue roads represent just high-speed roads in general. So, this is not a situation where we would be looking for y'all to fund an extra police force or anything like that. This is something that we would incorporate traffic calming into. You know, you're looking at your rumble strips, things like that, to kind of reduce speed, as well as working with DOT to actually reduce the speed. But that would be in conjunction with other traffic calming measures. What do you think of the traffic?
Okay. So, let's talk about the school zones. Really, I mean, I think there's some stuff already going on up at the high school, thinking about help vehicles come in and out of the exit, and people passing each other, if you're challenging, or trying to pass each other when the school buses stay forever to get out of the high school. So, the high school, we think there's some pretty, you know, simple signs, you know, slowing traffic, et cetera, where we can get some mileage. Truly, the elementary or middle school, where you've got several serious injury crashes at Shealy, Brody, and Lee. Thank you. Several serious injury crashes there. High speeds coming into, from all directions. There is a sad little kind of crossing up here on the north end of the school, which frankly, is a crosswalk that leads into the drainage ditch. And actually, the crosswalk, if you look at it from an aerial view, it actually is pointing them in the wrong direction. You're pointing them actually to the fields, other than towards the school. So, we see an opportunity here to do something to tighten up this, tighten up the road a little bit, put in a median coming through. Again, just to kind of give people the context of slowing down, there's things I need to avoid as they come into town. One might argue that Lee, Shealy, and Brody would be a good roundabout opportunity. This is something SCDOT is doing more and more of. I view roundabouts both from a safety perspective, kind of purely to reduce the angle crashes, but also because I think it sets a tone as people come into town, that you're in a different place, and you're expected to start to slow down, right? It's also an opportunity to kind of show a level of investment in town and just kind of change, start to change people's perspective on what they're coming into. We haven't gotten that far to say, you know, that would be, this would be a good idea, that would be a good idea here. But certainly tightening up the intersection in some form would be. The school areas are pretty good in terms of sidewalks. They're generally there, there's a gap or two. A little bit further north on Lee, if I recall correctly. But generally speaking, there is sidewalk from the neighborhood. It's just getting the kids across those forty mile an hour roads that is the problem. So, just, again, calming the traffic, making higher visibility for those crosswalks. And at the bright light, when it's bright sun in the morning, sometimes you can't even see that kind of crosswalk coming up. It just kind of fades into the background.
There is a crossing guard at that crosswalk.
Is there?
Yes.
Okay. Good, okay, I missed that, thank you. How, does, is that a town fund thing?
School.
Schools must, okay. What's the water, is it one mile water typically? About one mile, one mile, the kid never walk to school before they get a bus?
Not a hundred percent, I'll answer that.
Ted, it claims about a mile, is the max. You could even use some of this state street's money and get another crossing guard renovation. Not that that's necessarily exactly what you wanna do. You can do that. So, that's, that's near the elementary or middle school. And then, lastly, these are the kind of policy things. Now, are any of these things that folks are excited about? And follow the left, right? Tell them.
Oh, I mean, people like turning left in places.
Right, alright, you don't wanna say that.
I mean, that's ridiculous.
In my part of the world, in my part of transportation engineering, we say a left is not a right. And so, all these left turns out of individual driveways, out of shopping center driveways, just make for, you know, conflict after conflict after conflict. It is not a, necessarily a wildly popular thing to do, but closing down some of those, not closing the entrances and exits themselves, but prohibiting a left turn with bollards and flex posts and other kind of devices, where there are uncontrolled movements, certainly helps the situation. Yeah, some shop owners will get less than happy about that, that they are real true safety benefits to doing that. So, that's something you could, for example, include in your land development code and pay attention the next time a store comes in about, you know, how to make sure that the access is off of the side street and not coming onto the main drag.
DOT is controlling that very-
Yes, at this point in town. They're getting there, they're getting there.
They're the ones making everybody mad about the no-left turn at the parking lots.
Yes.
They've got very strict.
So, I don't know exactly what your sidewalk requirements are when somebody comes in. I suspect it's, you know, build them if you can, but it's not cheap or easy in a lot of these places. They drain the ditches, but you're expecting a little more on the sidewalk construction whenever there's a new commercial development. Reducing building setbacks, so, again, kind of creating a smaller, you know, if you think about the two downtown areas, it feels like a small town where you're supposed to drive slower. With all the big setbacks, you know, with the big parking lots in front, you know, it feels like it's somewhere you're supposed to go quickly through. So, thinking about how your land development code situates buildings, you know, closer to the street. Now, store owners don't want their parking back, right? But still parking, still there, not going anywhere else. So, those are some of the kind of policy things. I'm not suggesting you endorse any or all of these, but in what USDOT wants to see in your plan, that you will consider such changes. Consider lots of things, okay? So, that's, those are the big six things, and we want to hear more from you all tonight. I was saying, I was not down here, but I heard the community meeting went really, really well. We put fifty-some odd people here that night, it was a big number.
I would say speeding was probably the number-one thing that we heard.
So, what's next? I think first question is, are we on the right track, right? Is there anything in here that is like highly objectionable or that you want us to give great reconsideration to, or anything we majorly missed? What we would like to do, so DOT threw us a little bit of a curve ball with the application process when they put it out. Initially, it was going to be, the applications were gonna be due around July 1st. They moved it up and made it June 16th. Ended up itself not a deal. But then, they put another requirement in there that your Vision Zero plan had to be adopted by April 30th this year, which was about a month earlier than we expected. Not a problem. You know, you all can endorse it at your, endorse something in preliminary form at your main council meeting if you think we're on the right track. And we can call it April 30th, a few days ago. They're not gonna like look into that. So, if you're generally good with where we're headed, then that's kind of the first tack we would take. Concurrently, we would be then working on the implementation grant. And here's our recommendation as to what you wanna apply for. And you tell me a few things, what you think. I should also say, let's, we did tell people we'd come back with another meeting, right? Just got a little bit over, so, you guys give a preliminary okay at your main meeting, let's come back and then do another open house sometime in June. And then, if you need to get one more final sign-off in, you know, your last meeting before the summer, we can certainly do that. On the implementation grant, here's our thing. Let's find four or five, five or six good sidewalk segments you'd like to put in for, and two or three intersection improvements. As Jessica indicated, what specifically we do at those intersections? That can change. But I'm thinking, you know, something at Saluda and church, kind of tighten up that intersection and start to show, you know, a presence there that then extends into your community development board that you're doing. Something at Lee and Columbia, the kind of, that sets the western edge of that community development and allows some of that money to start to spread into that community development projects. And then, a third project, which hasn't come to mind just yet, but-
Could it just be a package of sidewalks?
It could, it could just be a package of sidewalk projects. If that's what you want to say, all right, number one is, then that's where we go. The only thing I would add is that it needs to tie as closely back to the data as is possible, right? So, we are framing everything in terms of reducing risk, as we talked about before. Right, well, there's a big risk when there's not, you know, sidewalk, and there's not good crosswalks and signage and such. So, we would suggest you package the sidewalks with systemic speed control kinds of things as well. So, kind of welcome to town, you know, slow down coming into town, right? Welcome to town, let's make it walkable. I haven't figured out the right words yet, but that's my, my kind of thinking as to, as to an approach. But yeah, if we could get a good package of sidewalk improvements out of this and some other traffic calming stuff, I mean, I think that would be a win, but you're the council.
So, am I saying you're thinking our year-one, our year-two first implementation year, we seek eight to ten million dollars?
That's, yes. Now, question becomes, where does the match come from? And my answer always is, well, we'll figure that out. Again, easy for me to say. So, it's a twenty percent match, however, there's a number of ways to get there. Two or, I'd say two or three things. One is, it gets spread out over four, five, six years. So, if you were to get awarded in July, by the time you actually signed the agreement and are able to get started, you're talking about nine months later. So, now, you're talking about FY twenty-six.
Twenty-six.
Twenty-six, right? And then, but it's, by the time you actually go through the design and spending the money, you're looking at, you know, another four or five years just to get through all the hoops and hurdles. So, don't think about it as an, oh, my God, I gotta come up with one big slug of money every time, number one. Number two, you know, I think, I think, my view is, SCDOT would be hard-pressed to kind of look the other way on their roads when you're bringing in, you know, six, seven, eight million dollars and not be a participant in that project. That's, that's my view of it. I don't, I don't know what the relationships are here.
We've had conversations with DOT, and I think we had success on the intersection widening that we did at church and Heim Street. And DOT's comment was, well, if you bring local money and we're willing to, you bring something to the table, we're willing to play ball.
Green mail. Green mail.
Green money?
Blackmail.
Green mail, green mail. It's a Navy term.
Yeah, no, I mean, it's, I think they would be hard-pressed to, like, oh, wow, yeah. There's lots of other ways to kind of drive down that matching.
Our match on eight million dollars would be roughly, what? One point six.
One point six, yeah.
One point six, rated over five years, is three hundred and twenty thousand a year per se. So, you know, that's probably manageable, although you'd have to go through all the numbers to see where the funds-
And really, you could-
And there's other sources for matching funds. Is there any provision for in-kind?
Yes. So, for every hour that Ted spends on it, or Jay spends on it, or somebody else spends on it, that just starts to-
And anything that our workforce does.
Your-
That's right. Okay, so, there is provisions for in-kind-
Yes.
Contributions to that offset.
Exactly.
Now, are intersections, East Lee, East Street, Mitchell? Saluda? I think East Street has the highest incidence of traffic. I think the chief could verify that.
Palm Branch is one of the higher incidents.
Well, it becomes east.
Or southeast.
Six oh one thirty-two, last rings, Palm Branch. I used to get confused. Now, the pool of money that we're looking at, that's a special set aside?
So, the infrastructure bill set aside a billion dollars a year for five years, and what's gonna be on that? For the Safe Things For All program. There was a court in the law that said forty percent of the money had to be spent on planning grants, like the one that you have now, which was kind of crazy. I mean, they've been totally undersubscribed in that amount.
Four hundred million?
Yes. Times five years, right?
Are they following the usual distribution for rural metro?
There's no requirement too, but I can tell you, looking at the award list over the past few years, yes, they've been more than generous to rural areas.
Because the federal net, the federal normal is ninety percent.
Yeah, no, they've been, they've been far better.
It's ten percent to rural.
They've been far better.
And we're in rural, starting your Cox Fair.
Can I say something quick?
You may.
I think our, in talking with Jamie, I think we agree on this. Our biggest opportunity for probably our largest implementation year is going to be the application that we do this year, because we were only one of six South Carolina entities even awarded the Action Plan Grant. But once the news started getting out, now you've got a bunch of cities and counties and entities applying for action plans now, and this year, they're gonna be coming back next year for implementation. So, we're kind of in a smaller boat right now with people that are gonna be applying for implementation this year. But next year, you're gonna have a much larger pot of people. So, this is kind of our biggest splash. And to make, it doesn't mean that next year we can't apply for a little bit more, but if we get eight or ten million this year, we're probably not likely to-
Are traffic control devices included? Traffic control?
Yes.
Which would be options at Shealy? Well, don't believe Shealy will meet yet.
Southeast Avenue would.
East Avenue would, Saluda would, so they would be eligible for traffic control. Shealy Road may not meet the SCDOT spacing.
DOT has not been happy about the idea of a light at Shealy Road and Howie One for years now. Now, that's not to say their opinion won't change with increased traffic counts, but-
And increased cash at the table.
Yeah, and increased cash at the table. But in the past, they haven't seemed to have an interest in wanting to do a traffic city there. But that could've changed in this one.
So, my, to Ted's point earlier, Mount Pleasant got a twelve and a half million dollar grant last year for implementation, in the first, in the first round. For the life of me, and they were the only South Carolina community to get it, for the life of me, I can't figure out how they even qualified in the first instance, right? But they did, and they got twelve and a half million dollars in tuition. So, y'all went on Mount Pleasant. There is, you are a year ahead of everybody else, and this is your opportunity to go for what you get, what you want. So, I started saying, the amount of money, it used to be forty percent planning, sixty percent. The Congress said, okay, we screwed up. And went back and took money from prior years that was unspent on the planning side, because they couldn't give it all away, and rolled it into the pot. So, normally, the pot for implementation would be about six hundred million a year. This time, it's seven hundred and eighty million dollars. So, you know, you think about, you wanna be one of a hundred communities in the country, you know, you want one percent of that, it's not too much to ask for. I think that's well within the value. Like, you've got a good, strong plan, you've done the hard work, the homework. I think you have a good, you know, opportunity to succeed here.
Traffic control at Saluda, the roundabout that you had a pictorial on for Saluda and Church Street would also infringe upon the project that we have for Yonah T.
And again, like they said, that was, I saw it too, and I'm like, well, that may not be the option.
Traffic control device, you know, it's what, half a million bucks? Ten, twelve thousand dollars a year operational costs. Do they include operational costs over the long term?
Typically not, typically not.
That would be DOT's.
That's, yeah, that's-
Well, would they, would they want to?
They have, on that one in specific, they said, yes, that's one they could see a signal to.
What about certain areas you could put, do not turn left between these hours?
Yes.
Right down here.
All up and down parts of church and church and-
I don't see nothing there.
I would, I would go one step further. Now, give me an example.
Now, alright, so there's, I know, she's talking about Mitchell and Church Street.
Where Wendy's and all the-
Right, yeah, Simon and Wendy. The conceptual idea from an intersection improvement standpoint is you would go a little into the Wendy's, the front part of Wendy's.
Yes.
And you would create, your left turn lane, straight lane now would turn into a left-hand turn only. What is now that right-hand turn lane would turn into a straight and right turn lane. But you would have to go into Wendy's and you would have to go a little bit into their property to create that lane that, that ends up merging in, but-
Yeah, we've got five or six intersection, intersection concepts we've put a couple up here just to-
One about eastbound in the morning, heavy left turn traffic going to the school until they find out they can travel the highway and make the turn on Mitchell.
I guess that's where our conversation, if we had the left and straight right going westbound, maybe there's a signaling option for a left turn only or something for the morning traffic. That would be a DOT discussion on what signal options are there for them.
Another base is right down here, Pearl.
Yes, the, the, the problem we're facing there in my conversations with DOT about that is you're so close to the Walmart.
Yeah.
You know, you, you run into signal, the closer you get signals, the more issues with timing and not having people backed up in intersections, because this one's held up. Their concern there is how close it is to the Walmart, that you could potentially run an issue there of traffic.
Okay, then why couldn't you just do number one one-way and 23 one-way? We've got enough cross, well, cross lanes.
I would say this, that concept is the absolute, last-case scenario of traffic, rebuilding traffic in this town.
That's the nuclear option.
That is the nuclear option, absolute last resort, that we've got to control traffic in town as we would one-way 23 and one-way 1. I don't think we're anywhere close to that.
Well, the problem with number one is you're dealing with federal also. They will get into the act, not just as SEDOT. That's a federal funded road, so that would-
But I agree with the term, that's the nuclear option.
There's ways to go around it.
So, I'll tell my own truth here. When I was Deputy Director of Baltimore DOT, I had a council member who would call me incessantly. I want a speed bump on Patterson Park Avenue. I want a speed bump, I want a speed bump. I want rumble strips, I want a speed bump. Can I get a stop sign, I want rumble strips, I want a speed bump. Like, literally, you know, three times a week for a year. And I finally said, what do you want, Councilman? He said, I want rumble strips, stop signs, speed. I said, no, what you want is for traffic to slow down, right? Let the traffic engineers figure out the solutions, not, I don't mean this negatively. Articulate the problem and let us do this. So, anyway, he then said, I don't care about, I want, said, fine, Councilman, write me a letter, because I know what's going to happen the moment we put a speed bump in front of somebody's house, right? They're going to get all hot and bothered, and they're going to call me and try to take it out. Councilman, write me a letter, tell me, you don't need to use my phone, I'll just say it. Write me a letter, put it in, put in the speed bump. Forty-eight hours later, Mrs. Smith is really hacked off about that speed bump. Why would you put a speed bump right there? Well, Councilman, here's the letter you wrote, right? Now, if you had wanted traffic to slow down, right, and not have an adverse impact, then articulate the problem and let us work on it together. I'm not saying I know all which is best, but let's articulate the problem well, and then we can figure out what the specific alternatives are that Mrs. Smith would not be happy with, Councilman, perhaps thereafter.
I have a question.
She didn't take it out on me anymore. Yes, sir.
What, what, what is the purpose of sidewalks?
To give people a safe place to walk.
Did what?
I was wondering what the purposes of the sidewalks?
Do I have two things? I mean, another is, it's a form of traffic control from off the road, crashes, right? When you have the curbing gutter, you know, somebody is less likely to be here.
Now, who needs, who needs sidewalks, using your definition, for the neighborhood?
People who don't own a vehicle, people who, you know, aren't able to drive a vehicle, et cetera.
Because I didn't see those neighborhood sidewalks.
So, the way, way we describe it was-
Line Street, Howard Street?
Yeah.
Yeah, it's not as clear as it could be, was let's get the, the rest of the spine built, right, so that has people get hit it. And then there's four kind of primary neighborhood connectors. There could be others, right?
Line, Howard.
Line, Howard, oh, that's line.
North and South Lee's.
That's Road to South Lee's, correct. There could be others, I mean, we have a longer list that came out of the community meeting. We picked kind of four of the-
I think Bernie was on the list.
Yeah.
Yeah, Bernie's a huge one on the list.
So, we can, we can amend and adjust that as they do like.
And Councilman, again, like you said, right now, it's going after the pot. We can determine the sidewalks and everything as we move into that. Right now, it's just about getting the funding allocated.
I got one other question. And this one is, now, we are talking about traffic calming, slowing things down. At the same time, we're talking about adding 200, 400 houses to create down here. So, now, we're going to be creating a serious bottom deck. If you have all these traffic calming and all these sidewalks and things like that, you want people to be able to walk, whatever, but dumping the 400 houses here needs to be rethoughted, and it needs to be part of this plan, because you can barely get out of number one on a Friday, can't get out of Thankgall's or KJ's parking lot, can't get out of Walmart. So, really need to think about that. Then we don't have a good zoning, so we need to come off of the grant thing, but we need to rec, um, sit down and plan what we're going to be. We're going to be in a town, a small town like that with traffic calming, then we can't have 400 houses, can't have 400 houses to, to the, to the system. They got to be put somewhere.
As Teddy points out, there is going to be some flexibility in the use of the funding if we say sidewalks and maybe we for, um, street in front of the mayor's, beside the mayor's house, and I'm joking. Look, forego it and take our money, put it on East Street, or, I'm using an example.
Yeah.
All right.
I don't need to second one.
But basically, if we put it in this way, we can use it somewhere else.
I, I think the, the zoning discussion is a good one.
The housing discussion is a good one.
Say again?
The housing discussion is-
I don't think he controls the housing.
To what?
I don't think he controls the housing. But maybe you could put him in Gilbert, I guess.
I didn't say he controlled the housing. What I said is, if you do traffic calming and then you add 400 units on top of that, we have to consider that, how that affects, how this will affect.
But tra, again, I don't think, I think, I think what was stated so far though is we're, the traffic calming right now is not necessarily being discussed for the Highway 23 and Highway 1 sectors, because that's not been a speeding problem of, that's what was on one of the sides.
I'm not going to buy the details of it, I'm just putting it out there as big picture.
Traffic calming that's being talked about right now is more getting into those downtown districts where you're going to eventually have more pedestrian, it's going to be for somebody's roads leading into town where we have more speeding, we've got more serious injuries and wrecks and more fatalities.
I told you, but, but basically, all I'm saying is, big picture, what we doing here needs to marry with what we do exonerating.
I don't disagree with you.
And then we need to also look at housing and where we want people to live, how we can move. This is the perfect time to actually think about how we want to move people, like you talked about moving here. That's what we need to be talking about, how we grow in a responsible way.
But for this, we're talking three intersections, primarily East, Saluda, and Mitchell.
Oh, to be finally determined that later day, if that's what we're going to settle, that's what they indicate probably in the presentation.
We would like traffic control lights to be a, an issue as, as one of the possible controls.
And it may be something as simple as a tra, as a traffic light installed at Saluda and Highway and Church Street, it may just-
Yep, that's the money. But like, yeah, that's, we want to play off, FH, or USDOT understands that especially in rural communities, you don't really spend a lot of time planning and designing until you know you've got construction money.
Yeah.
So, they want to see concepts, they want to know that there's been some thought given to it, and they're willing to be a little more flexible to allow things to evolve. So, you know, figuring out what that control is in the context of additional development as well. Maybe it's an extra right turn lane, isn't it, or a left turn lane to ease some of that additional financial traffic. So, that definitely gets baked in when we get into the actual design of an intersection. Right track, wrong track.
So, to reiterate what Jamie kind of said a few minutes ago, I think what, in, in talking with him and what he mentioned a few minutes ago, what they're looking for, I think at this point is, they want to get started on, on a grant application for, for implementation, to, to go after the funds. What USDOT wants to see is a commitment from the town that we, we've seen the plan, we support going after this money. Right now, we can't vote in a work session, so there's not a vote to be taken tonight, but a consensus to them that, yeah, we're, we want to go after this funding is, allows them to get started, and what we'll probably do is come back with a resolution at the main meeting to be voted on that says, we support this action plan, we support going after the implementation funding, and that's what we can include with our grant application. So, that's kind of the next step in this process, if y'all are good with that. Okay?
Yeah, easy enough. All right, so we will get moving, big sidewalks, intersection, traffic control, and then some kind of traffic calming coming in.
And what we'll do is, if, in July, July is when they award, what we'll do is, the moment we understand that we've been awarded and how much we've been awarded, I think that's where we'll come back for a working work session to sit down and discuss where do we want to, where do we want to put our focus, and to begin to start talking options about what we're willing to, to do from a project standpoint. Yes, ma'am?
What I've heard, just listening the entire evening, is that we're talking about traffic calming and the intersections. What I see and what I hear is that we are looking at expansion and increase in the Batesburg, Lees area, and because of that, that is the reason for the intersections, because we are grateful and most thankful that we do have a very low incident of accidents, fatalities, not only accidents, but fatalities both in this area. So, therefore, that's a positive for us as residents of this town. So, now, as we've seen the prospect of the increase in expansion coming, then we understand the need to make this shift in the changes for the traffic patterns in the Batesburg and Lees, well, business area, sidewalks. Where the mayor lives, there is no sidewalk, I don't think, down that street, and there's a little motel or whatever down that street. Now, that's one place, that's, and I see a lot of people walking that street. So, that would be, I would suggest, now, that would be one place I'd be in favor of sidewalks, because I see parents with children walking in that area on number one. So, in the future, and we are talking, I hear the number of years, the, the timing with the monies coming in when they do come in, we will come back to a session where we will discuss this in detail.
That's right.
Because definitely, I believe, in expansion, it's going to play a major problem in this, in this change that we're looking at.
Correct.
So, therefore, we will need to, as a council, come back and talk about this in detail. Because, of course, you do still have the streets that DOT, we need to work with DOT about some roads and streets, and the traffic pattern down at Starbucks, the one that my, my sister here was talking about, we've had three accidents there, fortunately, none were fatalities, fortunately. And I came to you about that before I was elected.
We had a school, we had two of them, one was a school bus.
So, therefore, something has to be done there. I don't know, I don't, we're not in that profession, but they got to do something about this. It takes reality to get out of there. So, in the future, we will definitely, as a body, come back together and look at this into this loyalty.
Absolutely. And one thing to keep in mind, and Jamie, correct me if I'm wrong, this is technically year two for us. Year one's action plan, year two, we're going to do our first year of implementation. This is a five-year, for us, a five-year deal. So, we're going to apply for hopefully eight to 10, get eight to 10 million this year. Now, again, no one is going to get more competitive, year three for us, year two for other people. We, year three, we could still apply for another two or three million and, and attempt to get that, and we can apply until year five.
And we're going to look at every way to, you know, stretch those dollars, you know. So, I, I've seen some communities like, oh, well, I'll put out one little sidewalk to bid, another little sidewalk to bid, and, and spend cost more money to put out four small projects than it does to do one bigger package. So, you know, there's ways that you can stretch the money, you know, more efficiently, and so we can get, you know, deeper into the neighborhoods.
Okay, one-way Hendricks?
One-way, hold on, I'll get my-
Coming in on both angles, coming in on this thing.
Actually, one-way Hendricks, again, that's ultimately a DOT question, but it's certainly a concept that could be looked at as the one-way to put down on 23.
That would be the intersection on number one has to be changed.
Friday?
You have, yeah, you have the curbing broke down now because-
That's right.
Friday, when that tree, when that tree was across 23, that speed became a one-way almost, because you had to turn around or go that way, because you couldn't come down that way, because you couldn't get out of the-
But we are blessed that we have so many connector streets. One-way is a potential option off of 23 to Highway 1.
We can get, we can get more of these optional shoes on.
But again, let's get in the funding, let's come back to the table with what we know we have, and, and a lot of it's going to be determined by, by Jamie and his team. What, they're going to have to put cost opinions together based on what we decide is priority, then what the scope of work is, and then their engineers are going to have to get to work on putting together concepts with cost opinions. And the cost opinions are going to determine how much you can really do.
We have one, yeah, one over Virginia, we just wrapped up today, where they came in with 23 projects and 11 million dollars, and they thought they'd get most of them done. They ended up getting 16, you know, of them done, which was frankly more than I thought by the time they started bargaining with each other. But, you know, it's about how you package and stretch things as well. But, yeah, I hear you about getting deeper into those.
Getting deeper into neighborhoods, that's where the people are. That's what you want to keep the beat.
Well, and Councilman, I agree with you, we got, we got neighborhoods that need them. The problem is, and to Jamie's point, and to, I think it all flows together, but you can, you can leave them on sidewalks out of the residential areas and onto the main corridors, but there's no sidewalks in sections of the main corridors to keep them on. So, if you fill in your main corridors and you got that done, then you start working into your neighborhoods that feed into the main.
That's what we need to put in place. Cut down on some of these five-block, get the car drive five blocks. It should be, so, get out and walk five blocks are better than that of ice. Or, we hadn't talked about golf carts. I'm saying, she has a golf cart.
Y'all, y'all have anything else for, for Jamie and his team tonight? All right, so maybe we'll come, maybe we'll come back if you'll work yourself a resolution, satisfy USDOT, so.
Our federal partners, we said. I didn't, usually I say that to a big group of tenants. Yes, we'll get something together that will satisfy our federal partners, we'll get, go on on the application, and, May, Councilman, is it the sixth or?
Uh, well, May 10th, is it 10th?
So, now, 13?
Either way, we'll find-
It's the second Monday of the month of May. Um, the one thing that I will send to y'all is a, they, they sent it to me, it's a complete comment list of all comments received, and it's actually broken down by road. So, roads that receive multiple comments, they've got all the comments listed under that. I will shoot that out to y'all, so you can have that for your review, and you'll know what all the comments were, so. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. We've got one more section of this, y'all are free to leave, or if you want to grab you a couple pieces of pizza before you go.
How's Shelly's open?
Shelly's closed on Wednesday. Sorry, man.
My next best bet.
Well, we've got Whiz's Pizza over there, salad, if y'all would make you a plate before you go.
Take, take a five-minute break there. All right, and you got Groucho's, if you just want something fast.
If you want a sub, they do, they do warm subs.
Whiz's is next door. Whiz's is next door, that's-
Councilman in Baltimore.
I'm going to pause this. All right, y'all ready?
Ready.
All right, next thing, and Ms. Hartley, just to bring you up speed, because everybody's, everybody's sat through this before. Each year, as a, I'm, I'm in the budget season to just kind of prepare the budget to bring to you guys, one of the things we like to do is come to council, and this is that opportunity for us to tell you, here are some things we think should be a part of this year's budget, or things that we need to try and get into this- here are some things we think should be a part of this year's budget, or things that we need to try and get into this year's budget. But it's also an opportunity for council, if there's ideas on things that they'd like to try and see making in this year's budget. You know, there's certainly no promises that we can bank on any and all of this, but it's things that we want to strive for, things that we want to try and get done. So that, that's what this annual action item meeting for tonight is. First thing I want to do, like I always do, I want to recap the current year's budget, the annual action items that were in this year's budget, and kind of where we stand with those. So this year, we had been to provide staff with a 5% cost of living pay increase. That was done at the very first part of July for this budget year, so that's been completed. Continued progress in complete the liquid chemical fee project. As you've noticed in your weekly report, it's not done, but it's done. We're in the final testing of the system. I think they are working out a few kinks with a couple of pumps, but those should be wrapped up here soon. We'll be able to market this completed. Continued progress in complete Phase One infiltration and inflow improvements. This is done, we got our final payment request in this week, and that's been submitted to get the final payment out on that. And then that project's closed. Continued progress on the water project, mid-May. I know I reported it last council meeting. We should have pipe in a couple weeks. Pipe distributor has let us note that mid-May is the timeframe now for the pipe. We have expressed that this doesn't need to be moved again, and mid-May, we expect pipe to be on the ground. Hired additional finance employee, that was completed in July. We've gotten them in the role, and that has worked out very well. Hired a park maintenance and repair employee for the street department, that was also done. Just briefly on that, we have one guy assigned to the Leesville side of town, one guy assigned to the Batesburg side of town. Instead of grass getting cut every other week in the downtown districts in the park, the grass is getting cut every week.
I saw someone cutting trees in the Leesville park. Is that someone that you hired?
That is a, we do some prue, annual prue, if you look for any dead limbs. When the Irma incident happened a number of years ago, that took a child, or a mother, I can't remember, a child. We kind of put the park on an annual thing for a contractor to come out, look for any dead limbs or limbs that look at risk, get a limb or more.
Okay, I saw the trees marked with a yellow tint. I didn't know, now, the one said crime scene, I'm like, what happened? And I didn't know.
Uh, that, that could have been something left over from the head hot, potentially.
They just cut it last weekend.
The whole tree or?
The whole tree went down.
In the park?
Yeah, one right by the hanging auditorium. That one, that old one that was there is gone, and then over in by the.
And the determination may have been made that that tree was better off coming down.
Yeah, it just needed to come down. So I just saw two that were taken and completed down.
Did we do the rest that you did?
Uh, no, we, we didn't do it, the SC DOT didn't do it. That was something where we'll have a tree contractor. Yeah, that's just kind of included in the park maintenance and repair.
I was going to call you, since we're here, thank you.
Alright. Continued progress in complete construction of new town entrance signs. The next step in this, they're working on the RFP, we should be bidding those here soon.
Do we have a map of where those are going?
Um, I can, I can.
Would you share?
I would certainly share that with you. Complete engineering and design of water unity park, solicit funding, that's ongoing. One thing I will note about that, today, we received an email that Lindsey Graham's office is submitting earmark requests. Then that's due by the 29th of this month, if I recall that correctly. So we're going to be looking to submit this for federal earmarks, and really tying in the National Historic Trail component of this to try and intensify.
He's right. Well, I definitely want to be a part of that.
Okay.
Right.
And then, secure bond on amount agreed to by council and determine Phase One project to bid and award. So multi-phase thing here, met with bond attorneys, it is not a good bond market right now. A, rate, interest rates are really high. Two, the people who are willing to take the risk right now on bonds is lower than normal. And the, the last thing, it kind of falls into what we talked about tonight. We need to see those things that we can get done within the downtown districts, within this Safe Streets For All brand. We may be able to knock out some of the outer portions of those downtown districts, and that offsets some of the costs. So it was kind of awaiting the Safe Streets For All and what we can get from that, and how that'll tie into some of the downtown revitalization, and what can we get done with that before we move forward with anything. So it really is a good time to have a bad bond market, because it gives us time to work on the Safe Streets For All stuff. So, moving in, proposed 24, 25 annual action items, staff recommended stuff. Again, we want to provide at least a 3% cost of living for employees this year. That would be our goal and our hope, at least 3%. Certainly, if we can find a way to get five, we would like to get five. Inflation, I think, we've gone up 8% over the past two years, 3% the first year, 5% this past year. Inflation has still been higher than that. We'd still like to close that gap, because the reality is, prices of goods and services are not going that down. They've stabilized, and they're not really increasing the way that they were, but there's no end in sight that prices are going to get reduced back down. So if we can continue to close that gap on cost of living, we want to do that as much as possible. I am running both 3% and 5% cost of living and what that amounts to, and I'll have that prepared for you as we talk about the budget.
Would you consider 3% with a 2% one-time bonus?
That, that is something we can certainly look at, absolutely.
That would keep it from stacking, and go back and look at the coming years.
I'll run it that way. I've run 3%, I've run 5%, now I'll run it with 3%, then what would it look like with a 2% bonus on top of that? For this year, one-time bonus. Absolutely, I'd run that. Judy, will you write that down for me, please? Jake's going to leave, no taking for me. Continued progress on the water project, that'll be on here for next, hopefully no more than two years. But certainly seeing that construction through. Bid and complete construction of the new town entrance, that's just kind of carrying over to this year's budget. Complete engineering and design of water unity park, the engineering and design should be done within this upcoming fiscal year. Solicit funding, it's not just about the earmarks, it's what other options and grant opportunities do we have to get this done? Who's to say we can't tie some of the Safe Streets For All into, to paying for a portion of that, this alone? Church Street, former street, don't know. I mean, the options are on the table. Pursue the Safe Streets For All grant funding and began Phase One traffic and pedestrian improvements. Construct Penn Street corner parking on the 24th of this month. We'll be putting that out on the SkiBo South Carolina Business Opportunity website, the town website. We'll do a 30-day notice on bids for that, we'll get that in. Bring back a recommendation for contractor and bids and for awarding by council. So if council chooses to approve the funding and approve the contractor, getting that done within the next fiscal year will be in order. Pursue a plan and funding for police and fire radio needs. I'm going to come back to this with a separate slide in a couple minutes to further explain that, and I'm glad Chief's here tonight. Chief even more knows more of the details about the radio needs, but it's something that we need to move forward and address. Pursue lease purchase or outright purchase of needing utility capital and facility improvements. With, with the water project, from the town standpoint, being fully funded, we have an opportunity, we have a lot of facility and capital improvement needs for the utility side, equipment that they need, but it's very costly equipment. That quite frankly, with the uncertainty of what our debt service is going to be, we just didn't know what we were going to have to work with. Now we've got a better picture of that, and so I'm going to come back to another slide on that in just a couple minutes as well. If awarded a grant by RIA that we've applied for, for wastewater treatment plant, clarifier improvements, working on the weers, the scum pump, and some different things in wastewater, we've applied for a million-dollar grant with RIA that we should hear back on, hopefully within the next two to three months. But if awarded that, coming to council, getting the necessary approvals, and getting this project done if awarded. Yes, sir.
So let's, I know you want to do capital improvement, I know you're talking about fully funded water project, but let's not forget the 27.9% that we have, we increased the water department, billed by, and that money was supposed to be in the lot box, right? So let's also think about reducing rates. We can just talk about prices not going down from inflation, but we need to do something for the people that actually paid the extra 27.9%.
Right, and, and I understand your point about the 27.9% that was supposed to go towards a water project and a payment for a water project. But we also have millions of other needs in water and sewer from a distribution standpoint.
That's not the, the compact, the problem.
My fear would be that we would reduce rates down to only increase them back up to take care of the infrastructure needs that we have.
You have a situation coming up with water system number two, as we refer to it, which is not going to be great.
No, there could be, we ultimately really need an elevated tank out of the system too. Wastewater, our wastewater needs are not done with all the projects that we've had. There's, there's billions more that need to be done.
There's always going to be millions more. I'm just saying that, what we promised the community was that we were going to use that money to pay for the debt service on a loan that we don't have.
Well, ultimately, that would be a decision of council, that's not a decision of Ted.
Yeah, I mean, I'm not sure that money was promised for debt service.
It was for the debt service of the loan.
For debt service on the loan?
It was a requirement of USDA rule development at the time to be able to have confidence that we can make the debt service.
Okay, so it was the bond, sure, for that particularly, right? But the money doesn't appear to have been wasted.
I never said the money was wasted. It was not used for what it was, what we promised it would be used for. You can justify using it any way you want, but that's just, that was, that was, that was the will of council at that time.
Okay, so. This goes across all three budgets. This goes across utility.
This right here.
Enterprise budget.
It does, it does. This is all encompassing of A stat utility and.
This is not all one big budget situation. Some of it goes into the enterprise fund, some of it comes out of hospitality tax, and.
This would be across each of them. Utility, hospitality tax, hospitality tax, to be determined, hospitality tax, general fund, utility fund, utility fund, and then pursue automated meter reading system.
That's good information, but I still, I'm still going to stay on what I said.
Yes, sir.
My point, I said what I said.
Yes, sir.
And the water valve analysis is the multitude of valves that we have controlling water.
That's correct.
That may save us disaster one day.
So, so to, to, to bring you up speed real quick, I put this in weekly reports, but I'll state it so that we're clear. The challenge that we have, we have very, very old valves in the ground. And, and I will be the first to admit that the town, for many, many years, did not have what we call in a valve exercise program, where they go out there and they turn the valves on a, on a periodic basis to keep them loose and looped. And the issue that we're facing now is if the 10-inch water main on Highway one breaks, and our guys dig it open, we go turn valves to try and isolate and cut the water off to that line, and they will not cut off. And, and therefore, our guys are in a very dangerous situation, which is they're trying to repair a line under pressure. And I don't know if you've ever seen the amount of water that spews out of a 10-inch line under pressure. It's a lot, it's unsafe working conditions. So we've already been awarded CDBG grant for this coming year. I don't remember the amount off the top of my head, it was 490-something thousand dollars, I think. And, and what we've got to figure out first, we're not looking to replace every valve that we have in the system. We want to come up with a, a plan of action and an analysis that we can separate this town into quadrants, smaller quadrants, and we can install new valves or replace some existing valves that allow us to go and quadrant off an area if we have a water line within that area versus trying to replace hundreds and hundreds of valves that we have in our system right now.
Are we confident we know where all the valves are?
We, we're pretty confident through record drawings of where they all are, but the problem is that most of them have asphalt over the top of them now, and they're not accessible.
But the annual action I missed to do an analysis.
The annual action is to get this valve analysis study completed this year.
So that would then answer your question.
And then what we will come back to is future CDBG funding to, to actually get to work.
Because you did that dusting analysis study.
Correct.
Back up to the pursuing automated meter reading system. Do you have something out there already? Are you looking?
No, so again.
In the process?
One, one of the things that's not had this take that next step is the uncertainty of what we were going to have to pay for a water project, and, and just all the other projects that we had. Well, now, we've, we've knocked a lot of projects out. We have some projects left, but we've knocked a lot out. We have a better understanding of our debt service responsibility, our lack thereof. And now, we're kind of in a position where we can move to the next step. The benefits of the automated, the biggest benefits of the automated meter reading system is efficiency. A lot more efficient for our staff. We, we no longer have to go up there and read 3,500 meters. And let's, let's face it, there's a human element to meter reading that mistakes can be made. The thing with an automated system is constantly reading your system, whether it's every 15 minutes or four times a day, whatever we set up there.
Okay, my question then is, will the residents have to replace the meter that's in the ground now to comply with the?
The residents will not be responsible for anything. We would do it.
Because, the reason I ask, because I think it was in 1986 or '85, remember when the temperature, if y'all are young enough to know, old enough, when the temperatures in Batesburg Leesville went to eight that December, and the water, if you wouldn't remember, the water meters burst in the ground, and they had to replace meters, because ours was one that burst. And I think they had an 89 that morning after the low temperature that Sunday night, on that Monday, at the time that I called the town hall, and that's who we called then. They had already reported 89, so that's my concern now, whether we would have to, the residents would be responsible to replace.
No, ma'am.
Existing meter to the block.
Then we would take care of it. So looking to pursue forward with that, and, and just to clarify, I don't remember what you're talking about, but I know that every single year when it gets cold, I know about all the stuff busting all over this town, whether it's mirrors or whether it's water lines.
But that particular year, it was, we call it the nickel in the dime, temperatures went down to eight, and the water meters, I came home, and the water was, met me up at the Friendship Baptist Church coming from our water meter, it was just bubbling up out of the ground. So it was like 89 that Monday morning, who had, had to have replacements.
Alright, going to move on to the next slide. I'm going to ask, Chief, will you just, just come up and join me? If you don't mind. We've got police and fire radio needs. Due to changes in the 800 megahertz system and, and the age of our current 800 radios and UHF radios.
Age, did we just replace them?
No.
Since I was on council, we did.
In the past 12 years.
Yeah.
We are doing, and this is both from a police and a fire standpoint, the fire radios that we got, we actually got from Lexington County, used probably about six years ago, off the top of my head. Our radios need to be upgraded. The current 800 and UHF radios are at the end of life. They're no longer serviced if they break. The police department, and Chief, I'll let you just go ahead and hit on the police department, what you're, what you're looking to do.
I'll be explaining, and here's what we're looking at. And Councilman Kay, you're right, 12 years ago, we applied for a grant for these. With me and the major and a couple sources, we're looking at, it took about 12 to 18 months to try to figure out which way we wanted to go, to include the market and to include also our best price, our, yes, best bang for our buck. What I've submitted in budget, which is for us and for the fire department, and we'll get to that price in here shortly. But what we've submitted includes a group package of everything, all the way down to extra batteries, the carrier for the radio. The good thing that I like about it, that one of the best things I like about it is the redundancy that's built in. So the radios that we're looking at, if something were to happen to the eight hundred megahertz system through load roll in the state, they go up and down now. We get emails just about every day, we'll be down for an hour, we'll be down this. Uh, we'll have a redundancy to go back on our four sixty channel, uh, with our new repeater system. The most important thing about these radios is that, uh, you can't sit at home and listen to what Batesburg, Beesville Police Department say. So it'll be unencrypted. Uh, one of the most alarming things for me when I came up here was walking to a house to go check on a speeding complaint. And when I signed out, I heard myself inside the house. Uh, I actually thought those days were kind of gone. We pulled watch command about five weeks ago. I was on watch command. I got a call. There was a murder, uh, out the other side of Edgefield. And, uh, the sled agent asked if I would go check the house on Sullivan Street in reference to this murder suspect. So I went to key up to go, we're gonna be right to this location. I called dispatch instead, said, hey, in about five minutes, the one of the officers will be down there. Because if by some chance he was down there and if by some chance somebody was in that house and meant ill intent, then they would have hurt us. So the encrypted part is critical in today's energy. We had one just passed weekend also in reference to, uh, a suspect somebody was looking for. We had to do it outside of our dispatch system. So the new radios will be encrypted. So the days of, uh, you'd probably buy.
Scanners.
Yeah, you could probably buy a twelve hundred, eighteen hundred dollar scanner and still maybe, maybe pick up part of it. You could go to your phone right now and pick up what our officers are saying in town.
Well, I listen to y'all all the time.
I have another question about the phones. Now, what's the life expectancy of these new phones? If our old phones are at the end of life, I'm sorry, radios, like the end of life, what's the, uh, what's the technology?
It's included in the type, type which Councilman came, but, uh, it varies because of the the market. Uh, dare I say what may happen in China and places like that. But the warranty they will have, which is also included in the pricing, is for five years.
How long before we have to upgrade again?
Uh, partly wants to say after I retire. But the other part, I think it'll be quite some time because of what we have with the radio system, uh, that we're looking at. It'll be quite some time. I'm amazed this American engineered property here lasted twelve years, but it has. The bad thing is, is that they are, when we do have, they go down now, the parts that are often made now overseas.
Chief, if I could clarify real quick. So for the fire department, the fire department has always, or at least for the past many years, been primary, their primary eight hundred megahertz radios, which is compatible with Lexington County Fire Service. The police department has not been primarily eight hundred megahertz radio. It's a four sixty UHF channel, which is just local to our PD here unless somebody else has a radio or scanners that can listen in and do that. What Chief is wanting to do is move primary communications for the PD from the four sixty UHF to eight hundred megahertz, but maintain the four sixty ability in case the eight hundred goes down. We can go back to a local channel, uh, that's just here in town. So just to clarify, you're looking at a shift to primarily eight hundred megahertz.
And and the price for our four sixty, other than upgrading, upgrading the repeater system, uh, would be included in all of this also. So modernization, if you will, and another important thing is that any given night, if Lexington County wants to flip over and talk to me, they can. On these, they cannot. And we use them often for mutual aid or backup on calls. They call us a lot, like on Madera Road to back them up or go to a conference. So we could actually flip over. Police Festival coming up. We have to borrow radios, uh, from the state, uh, for all of us to be on the same channel for mutual aid. But it's just so many, it's just been so long. In twelve years, it's great that these these were brought up of a, bought up of a grant, but they run their course. Are the new ones gonna last twelve years? In today's technology, probably not.
Because of how the technology changes, it's the.
Washing dryer in the last ten years.
And whether or not the power is recharged to maintain the other, that's the normal life cycle, the normal life cycle and something like that, appropriate for ten years.
In a, in a perfect world, in my opinion, there would be a lease program for radios, like we do for tasers. Um, but there's not a leasing program to where every five years they'll send you new radios and you're you're turning them over. I wish somebody would really start a leasing program for radios, but right now that's not it because we would jump on that in a heartbeat if if somebody came with that. Um, you could see the pricing. I don't need to run through each one of these. What I, what I will note is we have applied, uh, Chief has put in applications for grants, uh, law enforcement grants. I believe Chief Ry is putting in on the fire service ad for, through fire grants to try and get as much of this cost covered as possible. Unfortunately, right now, we don't know the outcome. When do you hear back on your law enforcement grant, Chief?
Probably beginning of September.
So beginning of September. So it's a little difficult at this point right now to know how to proceed with this. Um, but also, uh, Chief has put in with, uh, Representative Cal Fars, uh, to try and get some money through the state budget if we can, um, even if he can give us a hundred and fifty thousand dollars in budget, we'll take it to go towards this. So I I'd love to tell you I have a plan on how to get this done at this point, but I don't. We've got to await the grant outcomes to see what happens with that before we really know how to proceed forward, so.
You, you have chosen any contractors? Is it a Motorola or Motorola?
No, there's a, there's other player involved, which was the part that we submitted as part of our budget. Uh, I guess speaks with Motorola, but it's not a Motorola right now. I think it's a better radio.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Uh, moving on, the next thing is the utility cap on infrastructure needs. Um, this is the budget request that I've gotten for this year, uh, from the utility staff. Wastewater treatment plant, as much work as we've done there, the the office building roof is leaking. And, um, you know, we we've looked at options. Um, we could call Aquacell and get the flat roof repaired, which is gonna be a lot more costly. But what we're proposing is to come off with an A-frame, build off the top with a metal roof and just kind of leave the old roof underneath it. Uh, it was a cheaper option. Um, a new storage building for the wastewater treatment plant. Right now, so much of their their equipment is left out in the weather. Uh, they would like to build them to be able to store their pump, store their gators, store their mowers, store that stuff to give it a much longer lifespan. Um, a new jet back trailer. I think we're all familiar with the jet truck that goes around town. You want to talk about something that's not cheap, anything to do with jet back. Right now, we don't even have the vacuum option. We have a jet. So we can go into a clogged sewer line and we can, we could try to open it up with a high power pressure. But everything that comes out of that into the manhole, the only way for us to get that out is to try and go in with these scoops and baskets and get it out. If it's grease or rags, whatever it is. The truck is very old. It's it's having its maintenance issues. What they've said is we don't really need a new jet truck. If we can get a jet back combination trailer, which is cheaper than a truck, it will give us the ability to jet line and vacuum what comes out of it. Um, this is a lot less than a new vehicle. We would probably maintain the existing jet truck as a backup option. So we have it, but this is, this is one of our greatest needs on the utility side. Uh, new metering truck, we got, we still have, we replaced one, but we got one that's very old. I know we're talking about AMR, AMI potential for this coming year. Um, should, should we do that? We're not necessarily in as much need, but we also have a wastewater treatment plant truck, Ranger, that's very, very old, having its issues that needs to be replaced. This may be something, if y'all are good with moving forward with AMI, we may not have to do this. This truck would just be repurposed to the water point. Uh, new equipment trailer for the utility crew. To explain this real quick, y'all see them riding around with a mini excavator on the trailer? Well, by the time they put that on there with the supplies, they've actually, they are exceeding the maximum weight for that trailer. Uh, so we need to get a bigger, more heavier duty trailer to carry that equipment. Um, you're looking at twelve thousand for that trailer. A new dump body trailer, this is what they're putting their sand, gravel and everything that they need to fill in the roads. Um, they need one that's bigger and stronger and can carry more weight. A new sewer camera, we bought one of these probably about six years ago. It's reached its end of life. It's not performing the way it should. We really need to, we use the sewer camera very often to try and assess situations. That needs to be upgraded. And then the valve insertion tool. Um, this is something, again, going back to what we discussed a few minutes ago with the issue of isolating, um, as we move forward into the future and we come up with a plan, yeah, we'll probably have contractors come in and do things under grant money to replace the valves and based on the plan. But where this will come in is if we have new development and we need to insert a valve ourselves, we can do it ourselves. Right now, we don't have the ability to really put a valve on our system in a safe and effective way. But where this also comes in is if we can't isolate a water line that's broken and we're struggling to isolate, they can actually use this tool to isolate that line and put a new valve in and then they can take the pressure off of that line to make that repair. So this is something that they've requested as well. So that all totals up to four hundred and sixty seven thousand three hundred dollars.
A new excavator?
They've not requested a new excavator at this point. Um.
We need a bigger one. We'd cut down on Metro.
Do I know?
We'd cut down on the use of Metro.
Yeah, and I can get pricing on, and and you know, it may be something worth looking at in keeping the one that we have as a backup if the other one breaks.
I would recommend you size the utility trailer on the premise of your.
I'll, I'll have them work on.
Just, just an observation.
But where I would like, and we could certainly add that, look at that and add that to the list. Where I was going with this is I I'm not necessarily saying we take four hundred and sixty seven thousand three hundred dollars of this year's budget and just pay cash for everything. I'm a big fan of utilizing the lease purchases, spread it out over five years. Pretty much all this stuff will last longer than five years. Um, we have one lease purchase now that's a combination of utility equipment and general fund equipment, police cars and stuff like that. Um, we would, we certainly have the financial ability at this point to to do a new lease purchase um, to tackle utility capital equipment needs that we have. Um, so I would like to explore that option.
Going rates?
Going rate's about four and a half percent now. The day of, uh, yeah, for truest governmental stuff. We we get a little bit better than the average private market. Um, I'm not saying it won't come back. It's 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 kind of fluctuating right now. I had a meeting with them about three weeks ago. But I would love to explore the lease purchase option for something like this.
Because this figure is a projected, um, expenditure if you go with what you have listed now. Would that consider the lease purchase or not?
I I would say we pursue a lease purchase for this with that. That would be my recommendation. Rather than just coming off four hundred and sixty seven thousand three hundred dollars of cash, I'd rather see us do a five year lease purchase and pay it all over.
Go back to the fire and police. That was from, you said we looked at some grants. What did you say over there?
Grants, but i- if we weren't awarding nothing and we need to get it done, there's not a reason we couldn't explore another lease purchase. Listen, y'all, I got city manager friends, they got ten or twelve lease purchases out there. I mean, they, you gotta do what you gotta do to get it done. In a perfect world, I would have five lease purchases, one rolling every year that we would be able to buy a significant amount of capital.
That's why we have mental center? Okay, let's go.
So I, listen, that, from a staff standpoint, that's, that's what, that's our priorities. That's the biggest things we're looking at in this year's budget. Um.
Can we take a look at the hospitality tax budget and break out the, we already have plans for what we're gonna do with Wilson Street and, uh, Polish Park. And you know where the location of the restrooms are gonna be? Can we break them out and just do the restrooms?
Yes, we can. And I'm glad you brought that up.
Start with college, start with college because its usage, traffic, foot traffic is probably twenty times what Wilson Street is. All right, and go ahead and put the restrooms in. That's the biggest single complaint I get.
Now, I'm a one hundred percent agreement with you. There is not a reason why we came out and looked at putting, and again, I think the other side is it shows the public some movement and and on some things. By the time you take corner parking in, you're building new restroom facilities in your parks. I can get an updated cost estimate just for the bathroom facilities in both parks, um, separately and independently of each other.
We have to plant a row of trees between the alley and the, uh, Pine Street corner to hide the alley and we'll wait for the Pine Street corner parking lot.
Well, I will say that part of the scope of work in Pine Street corner parking is to resurface the alleys with. Now, I get that that won't necessarily take care of the back of the buildings.
I understand.
But certainly the the condition of the road and asphalt itself, but they will be planting trees in the corner parking, which from the road will, when bloomed and stuff will fluff it.
That's, that's gonna be a very small section reserved for street scaping, right? It's going to be majority parking.
It will be majority parking, but there will be street scaping within and on the outer portion of the alley.
Hold forty, forty-two cars, something. And the other lot, the one that, the garden lot, uh, would hold twenty-four. Yeah, between the liquor store and the, uh, they'll hold twenty-four cars.
Is that included in this Pine Street?
No.
Okay, that's, but look at, moving on the age tax with the restrooms particularly.
How do y'all feel about that? Because I I am in agreement with looking and moving forward with the restroom facilities and parks. I know that's a challenge for our staff. I know I've received lots of complaints about the smells and conditions of those bathrooms. We go clean, you polish a turd, but at the end of the day, it's a turd.
Will you have locks, would you have locks on it after a certain hour?
Yeah, we we would certainly put some type of of locking mechanism on it then, that we can set.
You might, might look at Lexington and ask them how they did their prefabs. They they bought some excellent, beautiful prefabs that, uh, came them in and set them down and then planted them.
The department usually utilizes utilized all the time.
Right.
So I passed it last night, was the last night, around seven thirty, caught a beauty with the department.
I would certainly say we bid both. Let's see what the price comes back at and 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 we can make a determination. If we have to prioritize one over the other, that would certainly be up to the discretion of council, but I would go ahead and bid on both.
Roughly twenty to one is a sample. Do sampling right by police little park at any time of the day, count the cars right by, or count the people right by here. You'll find it's gonna run twenty to one or better, uh, leave use of police little park. Um, I'm questioning the number of parks. We gotta sell them both and build another one in the middle.
So.
Traffic.
Um, Cheeley Road.
Yes, sir.
Okay, you know what, uh, Lance and them call it an alleyway where he grew up?
Who?
You know what Lance and them call the alleyway where they, where he grew up?
There's no alleys where I grew up.
All right, no. They call, they, they usually they call them court. And so we can utilize that alley space, you know, if you're talking about street skating. But you can utilize the alley spaces on the walk space behind there. And then Aiken, I know that.
Yeah, A- Aiken's done a lot.
Yeah, they did a lot with the, the alley, court.
Court, no.
And downtown Columbia, they they've done some of that with downtown Columbia as well.
Yeah. Y'all don't have alleys?
All right, that, Mr. Mayor, that's all I had, sir.
All right, thank you.
Um, anything else?
Without objection. Without objection. We are heard.
I guess I say it was a derek, right?
No, that's a derek. Nice.
Kind of control.
Yeah, so, so we do a maintenance kind of training.
Oh, say it all day long.
I mean, it's, it's, you gotta give three.
Oh, my gosh.
Where's the work?
At least it's gonna be.
Next to two dozen, three dozen.
So y'all can check each other.
It was way too many.
All right, y'all have a good.
I'm gonna have to get some corn.
I think, I think.
They wanna shift the eight hundred.
Get that up there.
That's the important thing.
It's all service operation.
If the system went down during one of the eight hundred's shift down.
We have three hundred, we have five hundred and twenty service. The eight hundred's with thirty-two dollars a car. And we support this, this eight hundred, twenty-five year, thirty years old.
And it weren't.
And then there was a way to do them. All right, there was a way to do them. And, and, you know, all we did was, we offered customers a hundred dollar.
Listen.
Tell them, tell them, you know what, they're customers a hundred dollars.
Listen, they said, they listen.
And I think that would be great, I think that would be great if we were sticking with the four sixty UHF, putting on Quest here. Which, and those.
They'll be nice for the situation on that switch. They will.
Three hundred, three hundred.
If you catch the maintenance, I'll make sure. I said, anybody got no man with a wrench?
At once.
I'm sure the fire department has a key.
They use fire scene stuff. That is thirty.
It would help us.
Yeah, that's, 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 that's thirty.
They'll just use that for local fire scene stuff.
It was a different time.